Good evening and Merry Christmas. At this time, we'll call our December 9th, 2013 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. If y'all would stand with us, please. Commissioner Veronica Buchanan will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Veronica?
Let us bow. Gracious Father, we're thanking you for this day that you have bestowed upon us. We're thanking you for being Almighty and All-Knowing, dear God. We're asking you right now to continue to bless our mayor, dear God, over this wonderful county that you've blessed us with, and we're grateful that we're able to live here in unity, dear God. We're asking you to come into this meeting tonight and anoint our minds, our hearts, and everything we need to do our jobs for this county. Father, this is my prayer. In Jesus' name, thank you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I be seated. Gal, would you call a row, please?
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a call.
Approve the minutes of our October 14th and 28th meeting. We'll call on our Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, other than motions, we do approve the October 14th and October 28th minutes.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Items withdrawn or deferred. Doug, I believe we have one.
Yes, sir, we do. Thank you. Under site plan approval, item seven, item B, Benchmark Companies Mulch Yard, we've taken that off the agenda. They had some issues with the design. They submitted one design, then the applicant decided they wanted to kind of redesign the site the way they had it, and there wasn't enough time for them to get that in and for us to do a proper review of it. So we'll see that at a subsequent meeting.
Item six, final plat approval. Item A is Farmington, Section Five, Phase One. The item number is thirteen dash two zero four seven, twenty-five lots on fourteen point five eight acres, zoned RM, located along Farmington Road. Subdivision is located off of Last Cassus Pike. Farming Development LLC applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the north side of Last Cassus Pike. This is an extension of the existing Farmington subdivision. Commissioners may remember that this was approved, the preliminary was approved at the Planning Commission's meeting at March 25th, 2013. The final plat does appear to conform to the preliminary that was approved at that time. Something that's not shown on this, but you may recall on the preliminary plat, that there was a detention pond in a different section of the subdivision that was added to help with the drainage of this particular section. That particular drainage detention pond was recorded on a subsequent plat, but I'll let Mr. Hill speak to that. Besides that particular issue, everything else appears to be in order with it.
The detention pond that Doug was referring to, that plat's been approved and it's recorded, and that pond's in working order, and everything else on this plat meets our requirements. Mr. Chairman?
It appears to, yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item six B, Richard A. Rogers', Richard A. Rogers' property. The item number is thirteen dash two zero four eight, one lot on nine point four eight acres, zoned RM, located off Last Cassus Pike. Richard A. and Vicky L. Rogers' applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As stated again, this property is located on the west side of Last Cassus Pike. Commission members will probably recall this property from last month. This was brought before us for a number of waivers. The applicant wanted to see if they could obtain the waivers before asking their engineer to go ahead with the rest of the work on the plat. The waivers that were granted at the last Planning Commission meeting included the number of lots off a private easement, the access, access to it, the fire hydrant requirements, and the, I'm sorry, the other one was the county road specification, since there's more than four lots off this particular easement. Those, again, those waivers were all granted. The reason you're seeing this, even though it's just one lot, is because the staff cannot administratively approve a plat that requires waivers. So that's why this is coming before you tonight. But all the other comments have been addressed.
Motion to approve.
And a second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item six C, Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, Section Two. The item number is thirteen dash two zero four nine, five lots on nine point two six acres, zoned RM, located along Crescent Ridge Drive. Subdivision is located off Barfield Crescent Road, New South Developers LLC. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plat for this section was approved back at the Planning Commission's June 10th, 2013 meeting. We did the review of the original submittal. The re-submittal that they provided, actually, the lot lines on eighty-four and eighty-three shifted just a little bit, just to give lot eighty-four a little more room to build toward the front of the lot. It wasn't enough for us to really have to postpone looking at this at the Planning Commission. But the plat does appear to be in pretty good order. Besides that, there were just a couple of setbacks, line issues that the engineer talked with staff about, but they've resolved those. And besides that, unless Mr. Hill has any questions or any comments regarding this plat, it appears to be in good order. Other requirements?
Approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Item seven, submitted for site plan approval. Item A, Bradley Creek Missionary Baptist Church. The item number is thirteen dash three zero two nine. New construction of approximately three thousand six hundred square feet on four point two eight acres, zoned RL, located at nine zero one four Bradley Creek Road. Bradley Creek Missionary Baptist Church is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you again. This particular property is located at the intersection of Bradley Creek Road and rural McKnight Road. The proposal here is to remove a portion of the existing church and then rebuild approximately thirty-six hundred square feet, new building addition for a new sanctuary. The existing sanctuary seated about a hundred and fifty occupants. This new seating capacity is about a hundred and ninety-six. Both of those fall under what we would now consider a medium community assembly use. Therefore, no special exception was, approval was required at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Really, the plan as it's presented is in pretty good order. The biggest change that they had to make regarding on the front of the proposed building, you can see there's a small porch in that area and a small awning over that. Originally, they actually had a larger canopy, but it was going over. You can see there's an existing two-inch water line in the parking area. They've cut that back. CUD didn't want anything over their water line in case they had to go in there to do some work. It would have made it problematic having to do the work under the canopy. So they've scaled that back just a little bit. CUD is happy with that, has signed off on the plat. Besides that, again, I'll let Mr. Hill make any comments that he may have on this, but from a planning standpoint, it appears to be in good order at this point.
On engineering side, everything looks good. Looks to be in order.
Just giving you a minute to look at it in case you have any questions. Ready for a motion if you are.
Motion to approve and a second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven B has been withdrawn. Item seven C, site plan approval for Dollar General. The item number is thirteen dash three zero three one. New construction of nine thousand one hundred square feet on one point eight nine acres, zoned CS, located at five two seven six Leanna Road. Monty Turner is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located, excuse me, got to turn the page one more time, at the intersection of Leanna Road and Sulphur Springs Road. The Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning of this property at their November 14th, 2013 meeting. The applicant's proposing to construct a ninety-one hundred square foot standalone building on the property. It would be, the Dollar General would be the only applicant, or I'm sorry, the only occupant of this building. There'd be no other suites within the building. After reviewing the site plan, we did identify a number of comments with the drainage and the landscaping. I'll let Mr. Hill address the drainage issues. As far as the landscaping is concerned, those comments have been met. The lighting plan has also been amended. It looks like that they may have to do just a little bit more work on the lighting plan. One of the requirements is that the lighting levels don't exceed what's called the point five-foot candle level at the right-of-way line. There is just a little bit at the entrance there where they still do. I think we can work with the applicant, though, to ensure that that is taken care of. Besides that, the rest of the site looks like it's in good order. From a planning standpoint, it looks like the comments have been met. But again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill for the engineering side of things.
On the southwestern corner of this property, you can see the detention pond. And on page four of the packet here, you see there's a BMP labeled G. That's another aqua swirl like we got, like we had down at Dollar General in Christiana. It's a proprietary BMP that's for stormwater, water quality. And so this one, this one will be very similar to that. This site currently doesn't have a whole lot of roadside ditches, and there's not a whole lot of drainage in place out there. And so what they're doing, I think, should improve the situation on that side of the road. And so I've spent a lot of time with Jamie Reed, the engineer on this, and we've looked at it, and I feel pretty good about the drainage on it.
One other item I neglected to mention is that they will need to do a subdivision plat before building permits are issued. And the design engineer for the project is here and is nodding. He understands that.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon all staff comments.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, rezoning request with public hearings. We have two tonight. Item eight A is Gary and Jane Legate. Item number is thirteen dash A zero one eight. Location is ninety-five twenty-two Franklin Road. The county commissioner is Tiffany Phillips. The size is approximately twenty-three acres. The tax map is ninety-four. The parcel is forty-two point oh five. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is AR. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you said, this is a first of our two rezoning applications tonight. This piece of property is located along the north side of Franklin Road, going out toward west of the town, going out toward Franklin. The applicants have purchased the property. They plan to live on the property and operate the farm that's existing on the property. Actually, I spoke with the applicants today. They're pretty much done with the renovations of the house, and they should be moving in pretty much any time. They've also received approval to construct a horse barn on the west side of the property for use with their walking horses, colts, et cetera. At some point in the future, the applicants would, may wish to have weddings on the property. If they ever do decide to get to that point, we've advised them that the structures and the property would have to be brought up to all applicable building and zoning codes. Under the AR zone, they can have events like this at a working farm and be considered agritourism. So I think that's one of the reasons they were looking at it, but also they just wanted to conserve the property and continue to work the farm. This property was originally zoned R-15 under our previous zoning resolution. There was a portion of the property, let me pull up the aerial photo here, there was a portion of the property right here that was zoned for wholesale trade to allow the wholesale distribution of shipping materials. It really, literally was just this small area right through here when it was zoned quite a number of years ago. When we rezoned the county under our new ordinance, we just made the whole property zoned RM. Of course, the applicant, the owner of the property, previous owner, was allowed to continue to use the structure in that regard, the way that he had it approved, although it hadn't been used in that way for quite some time. So basically, what the applicant is wanting to do is just, really, after making improvements to the lot, just continue to use these front pastures for their horses. The barn will be constructed back in this area. You can see there's kind of a little bit of a clearing out through here. And again, if they ever do have weddings at some point in the future, you know, that's just something at that time that we would need to make sure that it adhere to all of our applicable codes. So the applicants could not be here tonight, but my understanding is they have sent a representative, and he's raising his hand, so he is here. So we'll be happy to answer any questions if you, if you have any.
Questions for staff?
Oh, let me go through the, sorry. This is looking down Franklin Road to the west, standing on the property, looking across the street. This would be looking back down toward Murfreesboro. You can see their driveway right there in the center of the picture. That's actually the house on the property. You can kind of see the structure in the back here is what they're looking at. Oops, sorry. Again, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Not at this time. We'll conduct our public hearing, and our public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request will have the opportunity. Will the applicant's representative please come forward? How does it feel to be a representative?
Pretty good.
Yes. State your name and address.
My name is Nick Ricky. I am a friend of the owners of the property. They had to leave town short notice. Their son just gave birth to their first grandchild, so they weren't going to miss that. Any questions?
Do you know if any of the neighbors have any objections to this? Have you talked to them or heard from them at all?
The neighbors, in that one picture, you can see the house to the right, which is the only one that's really close to them. The house to the right over there, they've already discussed it. They know, really, they're not changing anything with the property. They're just going to use the front pastures there for their horses, is the intent, the main intent for what they're wanting, for the changing of the zoning.
And I'll add to that, I haven't spoken to anybody regarding this. I don't think we've received any phone calls on this.
Because there's nothing to the left. The left is a vacant field. That house that you can see to the right is really the only neighbor, and then, of course, the people across the street.
If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're open for questions, comments, or motions.
It looks to me like this property has had a commercial use in the past. This is a downzoning. You know, if anything, it's an improvement for the neighborhood out there, less traffic, things like that. So I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve the rezoning.
Careful, question.
And a second. Craig?
You mentioned weddings.
Yes, sir.
Would you have to come back and ask for agritourism, or how, how would you go about that?
Well, it's a use by right in the agricultural residential zone, so they, we would make sure that they met the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but they wouldn't have to come back for any further special exceptions or rezonings for that.
Well, they could have it.
Yes, sir, they could.
Doug, I have a follow-up question to that. So what if they become traffic issues and things like that? I mean, how's that addressed?
Well, we would just try to handle it at a staff level at that point. You know, we would see, from what they're telling us, the events they want to have are relatively small, and I don't think they're talking about like corporate events or anything like that, just the occasional wedding, somebody wanted to have in a more rustic environment, something like that. If it's going to be something where they're starting to have hundreds and hundreds of people there, and the parking starts becoming an issue, and, you know, tracking mud out in the road, those are things that we can address with them administratively, I think.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request for item number thirteen A dash, dash A zero one eight. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight B, K Patel. The item number is thirteen dash A zero one nine. The location is one one eight Crescent Road. The county commissioner is Gary Farley. The size is approximately ten acres. Tax map is one forty-nine, parcel's thirty-three. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is CS. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located at the intersection of Shelbyville Highway and Crescent Road. According to application, the application submitted by the applicant, they would like to rezone the subject property to commercial services in order to develop the site with a convenience store, possible retail, and possibly some other commercial uses intended to serve the residents of that area. You have a concept plan included with your agenda materials, the packets that are on your tables. You can see what they're proposing. Again, now, this is conceptual, so they're not bound by this, but you can see that they've got, right at the corner is probably where the convenience market gas station would be, some possible retail right to the north of that along Shelbyville Highway. Eventually, what they'd like to do at some point in the future is maybe this back portion here is get approval for maybe like a mini warehouse type facility. Again, that's, that's something in the future. It's not something they want to do right off the front end. Now, that is something, and they realize that even with commercial services zoning, if they get that, they will require a application for a special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's not a use that they can do by right in that particular zone. As you can see from the plan right here, you can see that there's Office Professional and Commercial General. This is a camper sales right here, Office Professional in this area. So it's a little, just a small commercial node right here in this area. This overview here, this is the aerial shot of the particular property in question. There was an application on this particular property back in 2000. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted a square footage variance for an off-premise subdivision sign back in the 2000. Looking at it now, after being out there looking at the property, that sign, if it was established, it's no longer there. So, but just to give you the, just the FYI that that had been done. Of course, any, if this is approved, any site plans and everything would have to come back through the Planning Commission as far as new building construction and those kind of things. So this wouldn't be the last time the Planning Commission would see this particular application if it is approved. Their concept plan are showing access off of both Barfield, I'm sorry, Crescent Road, and also off of Shelbyville Highway. As far as the water situation in this area, CUD maintains a sixteen-inch water line through this area along the frontage of the property. There's an existing fire hydrant, probably about a thousand feet to the north, and also one right here in the, I think it's Colonial State subdivision right down here. I believe that's right. And however, as the truck drives, it's probably a little more than a thousand feet, but if this does need some sort of a fire hydrant through here, that's probably not going to be an issue with that size of a line. So fire protection looks pretty good in this area.
You said that one, two lots.
I'm sorry?
What did you say?
Right here, it's a camper sale. Camper, yes, sir. Candy's Campers, I think is what it's called, yes. But it's, besides that, the, staff has received a few phone calls on this. Most have been general information. I did take a phone call from, from a lady a little earlier. I'm not sure if they, if they made, they are, they're waving that they're here, concerning some of the drainage in the area, but I'm sure she'll, she'll have an opportunity to speak here in just a moment. Representatives of the applicant are also present, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Let's go ahead and go through the pictures here. This is looking south down Shelbyville Highway, looking across the street, just looking back up toward Murfreesboro. This is looking onto the property. This is actually standing on Crescent Road, looking onto the property. That's an existing house that's on the property. There's a number of accessory structures you could see on the aerial photo, but this, they're basically agricultural barns. You keep a tractor back there. I think there's another garage back there for a boat and those kind of things. This is looking down Crescent Road, that'd be to the west. It's looking directly across the street. And again, it's looking back at the intersection. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, how far is Christiana School from there? That little middle school, is it?
I'm not exactly sure what the...
I'm just curious about the traffic.
Right. I'm not exactly sure what the, and I apologize, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Because I know it's that subdivision across the street, that's that Colonial State.
Right. It's a little further down, down here, down this way. Of course, the, the mini market, this is a use, you know, these uses that they're anticipating on this property would be to serve the existing residents in this area. I wouldn't foresee those being uses that would just generate a large amount of traffic from other parts of the county. So the people using this stretch of road would already be using it regardless, so I don't necessarily think there'll be just an increase in traffic in that area. I don't know.
So is it a, ain't it a church next door to them?
I know there's a church right, there's a church right here, up the road. I mean, this is Office Professional zoning. It's, I'm not exactly sure what kind of office that is right through there, but if it was just a church, we probably wouldn't have zoned it Office Professional. I mean, a church may be using it now, but...
It's not a church.
Ready for our public hearing? This time, we'll declare our public hearing open for item number thirteen dash A zero one nine. Would the applicant please come forward? I think I butchered your first name a while ago. It's Darmentra.
It's three acres with Huddleson Steel Engineering, and I'm representing the contract purchaser for the property. Doug has gave a great presentation, overall view of the property, so I can answer any questions that you have.
Questions at all?
On down the road, but we'd asked about a church, so does it meet the requirement for selling beer and all that stuff? You're, you're not going to have to ask for any variances or anything like that?
We don't have an user. This is all just conceptual. If we should need one, then we would, we would apply for one if we need it.
But I mean, you meet that qualification, probably.
I'm not sure where the church is, so I'd have to measure and see if we're within five hundred feet. I don't think it's that close.
This request is for seven acres, if I'm looking at that correctly.
Almost ten acres.
Ten acres. And it already has a pretty nice house and some ag buildings on the property. What is the future of, of those properties? Are they going to be maintained as residential, or will they be torn down?
Mr. Patel, who's purchasing the property, is, is intending to convert it all to commercial eventually in the future.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this zoning? Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Debbie Radabaugh. Mark Radabaugh is here. Never done this before. My name, my name is Debbie Radabaugh. This is my husband, Mark Radabaugh, and we live next door to the property at one nine eight Crescent Road. We have some concerns, of course, because we are the next property over, and we, his, this fam, this land has been in his family for about seventy years. We've been there for twenty, eighteen or twenty, and his mother is next door, and, you know, it's a lot of family land out there. Before they converted to thirty-one, there was a large sinkhole in that area that there was water drainage. Since two thirty-one was put in, it now floods. It will start in, this property floods. Mr. Allen is the one we knew that was there before. It looks like a lake, and it goes over into Mr. Barn Hills Field, and then it comes over into our property, and there's like a lake in front of our house. So we are concerned about that, and... So, we are concerned about that, and, and the traffic, of course, because we have a residential home next door. So, we, we have some concerns about that. Would you, I would like for, he knows more about...
It's just in the morning times, the Fleming Farm area, there's a, I don't know, there, I don't know how many houses exactly, way over a hundred, I would assume. To get onto that medium between the highways, you know, sometimes there'll be three abreast of cars trying to get across. So, anything that's going to be put there, it's going to be a safety issue right off the bat. And the last thing we need is a traffic light. But we're being flooded out. I don't know. Somebody gave them permission to fill in that, that front area.
There was a sinkhole there at one time that the water drained into.
Where you can see there's landfill. That act as a reservoir. Now, the floods that we have, like one in every five years, would, it's going to come our direction. So, there's going to have to be a lot of drainage, planning done. We're catching the blind end of it, is what, what's happening. I don't mind somebody making it a buck, but it seems like you're doing it.
Well, we're just concerned because we have a home there, and we don't want it to be too. We already have quite a bit of trouble. We've had five mailboxes knocked down. We don't even have a mailbox now because it's, it gets knocked down every time. There's a lot going on there, and so we're kind of concerned about there being a commercial thing, especially so large. If it was going to be just the front lot and the residential area was going to remain residential, that would be a little better than that hole, because it comes right up to our property line, right up to our property line. Our children are out there. And so, it is a concern for us.
The field across the road, Mr. Barnhill, the elevation is higher, so all of the water is directed towards our home and the home that they're talking about tearing down or whatever. When it floods, it takes three or four days before you can even get into the driveway. Mr. Allen, I know he took it to court a quite a few times, because they, they filled the sinkhole in when they built the highway to drain the water, and that's what caused, caused the problems.
So, is that all you want to say? I think that's it.
It's just, there's more traffic than what you think.
Yeah, there is.
So, where does this water go? Where does the water go?
Well, the last time it was that high, we had to actually park next door for about three, two to three days. We couldn't drive down our driveway. And then eventually, it just absorbs. We have a sinkhole on the edge of our property that's right between our house and this property line, and it eventually drains down in that direction, but...
That's where the water goes, is down the sinkhole.
So, is no creek or anything near you? Okay.
Once the river, when the river goes down, then, then that goes down.
So, it is potential to, I mean, we have actually had to not park at our house for several days because already, so we just don't want it to get any worse. We just...
And this, this affects my mom. She's near eighty years old. She lives beside me. She's not here to speak, but I wish she was, but her area as well. I don't know, it's a bad thing. This, this is not right. I, I hope y'all would really study this before you make a call on it.
That's all I got to come.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Anyone else? I see no one else, so I think the applicant's representative is wanting to make an additional comment.
I'm just going to add that, you know, again, it's conceptual in nature. We haven't got into the design of the drainage and stormwater runoff, but when we come back for site plan approval with more specific uses, we'll be required to have detention on our site, and we'll have to meet those requirements. And it's not going to get any worse necessarily by our development. It might make it better, because it'll actually be designed to accommodate additional runoff and, and provide detention that's not there right now. So, this board will have another opportunity when we come in for site plan approval on a specific use. And I think Chris Bratcher wants to come up and speak for the property owner, too.
Public hearing is still open.
Mr. Chairman Phillips, Mr. Demossi and Planning Commission members, I'm Chris Bratcher. I represent Mr. Allen, who's still the property owner at this location. Mr. Allen and his father were property owners there for many, many years prior to, Mr. Allen, that there, his father owned the property prior to him. He's still the present property owner. At this time, the purchasers of the property have in mind to do a convenience market at the corner. That's their only plans right now. They don't have any plans to demolish the house. I think they may even live in the house or some sort of like that, but right now, there's not a huge commercial use other than for the convenience, convenience market at that corner. So, right now, I think that's probably going to be the only thing that will happen there. And obviously, that's a busy five-lane road, and there's a lot of homeowners that would probably appreciate the convenience, of, of, of convenience store at that location. They will address any drainage, obviously, that would be developed on site. They'll have to maintain their own detention of their own water with nothing spilling out onto any of the property owners. And as Ms. Aker said, with the Hudson Engineering, they'll probably improve the drainage in that area with this development. So, I'd ask for your approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Bratcher, I'll tell you the truth, just from my opinion, I feel a little uncomfortable coming that far down Crescent Road with all that commercial, because once you start down that road, you're opening Pandora's box, you don't know how far it'll go. Personally, and I can't speak for anybody else, but I think I could feel more comfortable if we just split this in half and did depart the convenience store was going to be on, let the other remain commerc, remain residential this time. And as time evolves, for me, I would feel better maybe coming back and, and doing it piece by piece, and that would give the neighbors to, to the west a little, a little more comfort, I feel like. So, I don't know, and I, like I said, I can't speak for anybody else, but personally, I would feel better if maybe we sent this back and, and, and cut this in half, or, or could we cut this in half tonight?
You could do that tonight.
Yeah. And, and that way, they'd have their convenience store, there'd still be a good buffer between them and the neighbors and all, but, but if, if it's the whole track, then I'm probably going to have to vote no tonight, you know?
That, that would be fine. Our main concern at this point, and, and the only thing that we have, you know, definite is the convenience market at the corner. The rest of it was just conceptual. Well, we would ask if you were going to consider that to at least go back to the, probably where the driveway is to the home, and then go up that way, that would kind of split it in half, because we have to get all the, the property for the, there's got to be septic fields and things like that to accommodate that development. So, if you're going to, if you're considering reducing it, we would at least ask you to go back to, to a minimum of half of that anyway.
Doug, I have a question. Could they even live in the house if we zoned the whole thing commercial legally? Could they live in the house? Wouldn't they have to...
No, they could still live in the house because the use was existing before the zoning was changed, so it'd be a grandfathered use.
Can somebody point to where the former sinkhole used to be that was filled?
And, is it, yeah? It's kind of looking like, I'm thinking it's this up here, but I could be wrong. Eric, you know a lot more about...
Jeff, do you care if I'd rest the drainage?
All of that property that, that Mr. Demossi was pointing at, you see like a little shaded different green on the road? That's all filled in. That's been filled in probably, I don't know, several feet of fill.
And...
So, on the, what we see on this picture, that little island of, of shrubber, or looks like a depression or an elevation on the east side, next to, right along Shelbyville Park? That, that's probably where the sinkhole was, right?
I, I can't comment. I've never, I was not aware of any sinkhole whatsoever, but that property that you're referring to has got, it's high, it's been filled.
Okay. And, and that's the corner that you guys would like to build on?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Of course, that sinkhole could have been on the road, because the road...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any clue of a sinkhole.
And when somebody referred to, there was a, some controversy with the state, because they filled the sinkhole in, you know, I would say when that road got widened, that's probably when that sinkhole got filled.
Right.
And they've been filling that, that spot right there for years, because the bulldozer, I mean, I'm familiar enough to, the bulldozer sits there, and people bring in, fill it and knock it down periodically, but they've been filling that for, ever since they widened the road.
Well, what concerns me is if that's in fact where they would like for the commercial site to sit, then Huddleston Steel may want to sub out a geotechnical report, because you, if that's a former sinkhole that's just been filled, if it wasn't done properly, you could open yourself up for some issues foundation-wise. You think this... Hmm. Hmm, okay. That's my only concern, is just that you have a good foundation.
Well, that would be a concern of ours, too. We, the last thing we want to do is develop anything on top of a sinkhole, and that would be something we would have Huddleston look into as well. But Mr. Allen could probably shed a lot of light on that as well, and to best of my knowledge, I, I don't know anything about a sinkhole. It could be one there, and it may not. It may have been on the road. I just don't know.
Chris, while you're up here, it's against the rules of order, but Mr. Radabaugh, I think back there, has a question. Do you?
I was just going to comment on the state code. Just can you have him come up, Mr. Chairman? Can you have him come up so that the mics can get him at least?
Uh, okay. No. Just, just stay where you are, Chris. You're welcome.
My knowledge, the sinkhole existed where, when they expanded the highway over, that it existed where the highway sits as of this time. So, it, it was, it was filled in. But just please remember, this, my main concern is the, is the safety issue, you know? I don't want it to be sugar-coated and make, make it sound, it looks deserted, but at the end of that road, it's a huge neighborhood that comes this direction. So, it, it's going to be a safety issue that I think.
Thank you. Chris, you have any other...
No, sir, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Bratcher? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're open for questions, comments, motions.
Well, while I was trying to formulate my concern in my head about the sinkhole, I, I may have missed some conversation about splitting the property and only rezoning half commercial, and I kind of got the feeling that that was agreeable.
That is something that you could recommend tonight. Yes, sir. Now, what would have to happen is following this meeting, I'd get back with the applicant and their engineer. They would have to actually provide a legal description of the area that they wanted to, to zone that way. And then at some point, we'd probably have to look at, you know, whenever they decided to do a development, we'd have to look at, you know, subdivision plat to take that part out.
Okay. And just to be clear, the, the folks that have shown up to speak at the public meeting that have the house nearby, is that their house that is on the west side of that property?
It's your house right here?
Okay.
Yeah, it's this house right here.
All right.
My mom's house. It's on the left.
Okay. All right. And, and then Doug, see, see the natural tree line that looks like it splits the property? That straight-lined tree? No, in the middle.
Talking right here.
Okay. The, is the house and the barn, that's that...
The house.
That we saw in the picture earlier.
Right, this is the house right here.
So, what is behind that? What's behind the tree line right there where your point is?
Right here, these are accessory structures, barns, garage, things like that.
I'm with you. Thank you.
Doug, I've got a question. It may be a question for our attorney. They've been filling that void in there for some number of years now. That was a natural depression that pocketed or held the water from surrounding neighbors. Did they have to get permission to fill that, or were they illegally filling it all this time? Because you can't necessarily displace runoff from where your neighbor's water has historically gone. I mean, did they have to come to BZA to fill that, or did it just get filled?
I don't think so. I'll let Mr. Hill kind of handle that question.
That particular operation was not, no. It was monitored, because I drive past there every day about five times, so, but as far as them coming through, they never did. There was never a, a plan, and there's lots of places across this county that are like that. Now, for this particular site plan and the drainage, and Mr. Radabaugh was correct on the drainage, that was the low area, the sinkhole was filled, it was under some portion of the road there. The way that engineering will look at this when the site plan comes in, since I'm familiar and we can look back on RGIS, the contours as they were ten years ago, I'll look at the pre-fill conditions as we look at, at design. So, the detention will have to, to work that. So, we'll, we'll look very closely at the drainage on this.
We'll have to recoup some drainage that may not be there today.
Right.
Back to what it was X number of years ago.
And it's, it's very, very doable. Huddleston can take care of that.
Eric, if this is approved and it comes back for site plan, the entrance off of Shelbyville Highway, we, we're not, we're not going to talk about that tonight, but is it too, does it need to be north of that? Is it too close where people be coming out both Crescent Road and exiting the store, going...
Probably as it's drawn. I mean, what, and this is general, depending on what it is, we, we would probably look at maybe an ingress there and do all the egress on Crescent Road, something. We'd, we'll, we'll look at a in-depth traffic study on any type of commercial. And I, like I said, I, I'm very familiar with this intersection, so I, I know what the traffic does, and so we'll look at it very closely. We'll, we'll make sure, and safety will be our number one concern right there.
With no crossover between the north and south lanes, this looks more like an afternoon market than it does a morning market, right?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to throw out a, a motion on the five acres if that's not appropriate. I mean, I, I really think we probably need to send it back and let them decide. The buyer, the sellers, all that, get together and what present us with, it may be four and a half, it may be five and a half, it may be six. I don't know where the driveway is up there, and if we arbitrarily put a, a number on it, it probably is not going to be right. So, my opinion, I think, I think we need to send it back and let them decide and bring back, bring back the request that, that's going to be suited for them with what all the discussion we've taken on here tonight.
Is that a motion?
I will put that in a motion, yes. To defer till next month.
Litting the property? And the second? Still open for discussion.
I have a question. If this was to be voted on and denied, just a simple denial, is there a time period they have before they can come back and reapply? If I'm not mistaken, I, I think it's six months.
Let me just pull out...
Or can they modify and come back next month?
Make sure that we...
So, should there be more application fees? It would cost them a good bit of money.
This is what the ordinance says. It says, "Whenever an application for an amendment to the text of this ordinance or for a change in the zoning classification of any property is denied," which is what we're talking about here, "the application for such amendment shall not be eligible for reconsideration for six months following such denial, except in the following cases." And it lists some, some cases or some situations there. Now, what I would submit to you is that at this point, what your role is in a rezoning application is just a recommendation. So, even if you were to recommend denial of this at this point, they could still come back next month, the six months wouldn't apply, because the county commission has not been the body that has denied it at this point. So, I think, I mean, if you're comfortable making an app, a motion to defer for them to bring it back, I mean, I think that's appropriate as well.
Well, that's just what I did, is make a motion to defer, not deny. Because I give this, give them some opportunity. I mean, it, we, we don't need to be haggling back and forth, whether it's six acres, four acres, whatever, and let them decide and get a, get a game plan, and, and that's them deciding that and bring it to us. I think it'd be appropriate.
Nah, the commission still looks at it next month, and that just mows the water even more. So, if we defer, it's just sitting here for that month, and... So if we defer, it's just sitting here for that month and, yeah.
Have a motion to defer? And a second, that's correct. Any other comments? You understand what's going on? Okay. Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion to defer, please say aye. Opposition? It's unanimous the motion carries.
Hey Jeff?
The one, uh, I'm sorry.
Eric, if, if and when this comes back up, can you give us all you can give us at that time on the drainage on this? You know, I'm, I'm a little concerned because the neighbors said it's changed the water flow, you know, that kinda stuff. See what could be done. I know that's not, we're not doing a site plan at the time, but I'd still like to know for you-
I, I can give you some apps and kind of a report.
All right, thanks.
Before we completely leave this, Eric, just kind of in the nickel answer to what would happen if it were approved, uh, as far as answering the drainage and the, uh, safety issues that, uh, that, that the neighbors had on that.
We would, in the site plan process, we would look at, at, of course, doing detention, just like we did, just like the Dollar General we did earlier. You know, they had a large detention pond, you know, it, it can be above or below ground. And in this case, with the setup, it may be something where they wanna look at below ground and commercial. And we're gonna see more of that in the future. That's gonna be in the city, if you'll notice, there's more and more of that. You'll, you're, you think you're seeing places that detention ponds are just under the parking lot. So, so there's, there's lots of different ways to, to handle this. And as far as the traffic goes, we can, we can do something with the traffic to make sure that there's good site distance there, you can see back, uh, to the west. So we'll, we'll, we'll work on it.
All right. The one rezoning request that was approved will be heard before the county commission. I believe it's Thursday, January the sixteenth, in this room at six P M.
Correct.
Item number nine is, uh, staff reports. In front of you, you have, um, a copy of David's monthly report. You can, uh, take a look at that. And also, uh, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. And that'll be a six P M. meeting in this building here. Doug, you have anything?
Uh, no, sir, just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope everybody has a safe travels and we've got several things we wanna work on next year, but we'll be working on a report, uh, generate, to talk about at our day meeting in January.
Thank you. With that, we're adjourned, Merry Christmas, everyone.